Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors March tenth, twenty twenty-five, meeting to order. Reverend Hathaway, would you mind lead us in an invocation pledge, please?
Please bow with me. Gracious and almighty God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as a community. We thank you for our leaders, Lord. We pray that you would bless them with wisdom, sovereignty, and grace, Lord God. We pray that you would bless their families, the staff of our county, and bless their constituents. Make this county a place, God, where everyone is embraced. We thank you for the privilege of having leaders who have a heart for our community. Bless them and bless through them is our prayer. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Joining the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Hathaway. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Ms. Stewart?
Here.
Good evening. Welcome, everyone. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any board members have any changes, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I approve the consent agenda as presented and that it be made part of the record.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Any other discussion? Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Citizens' comment period. Anyone signed up? Two people signed up this evening. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, state your name, address for the record, and you'll be given three minutes. First is Joe Swartout.
Joe Swartout, five four two seven St. Leger Drive, Providence Forge. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Joe Swartout. Tonight I represent the New Kent Chamber of Commerce as the Vice President of our incredible organization. I'm thrilled to present a series of events designed to build a more substantial community engagement, presence, celebrate local businesses, and connect local businesses and community members together. Our signature monthly event, the New Kent Connect Networking Event, will occur on March eighteenth from six P. M. to eight P. M. at the New Kent Visitor Center. These networking gatherings offer local business owners, entrepreneurs, and community members a platform to connect with one another with intention and purpose. Our first Food Truck Palooza is sponsored by C N F Bank, Grubhub, I'm sorry, Grub Trucks, and Web D M G, and it starts on April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from five P. M. to eight P. M. This year, we have combined the event with a spring market. Our first Lunch and Learn Series is on May ninth, two thousand twenty-five, at Royal New Kent Golf Club. The first series topic is Protect Your Land, Protect Your Business, with our special guest speaker, Elizabeth Freel, the, and I hope I didn't murder that name too bad, the Executive Director of the Historic Virginia Land Conservatory Conservancy. I want to encourage our farmers' community, golf course superintendents, and wineries to consider attending this event, gain some insights from our guest speaker. Thank you for your time. God bless.
Thank you. Like your shirt, too. Next is the Regency Administrator's Report. Mr. Wynn? Oh, thank you. Sorry. Mr. William McSmith? Sorry about that.
Good evening, New Kent County Council of Supervisors. This evening, I just want to say something.
Mrs. Smith, can I get you, just to state your address and name for the record, please? Sorry about that. I've already messed up once.
Rehearse me. My address is forty-two forty Holly Fork Road, Burnsville, two-three-zero-one-one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Every town but McKinney Woods, Kent County, I forgot to give the location. A lot of people here, probably not from New Kent County. The address, direction, is about eleven mile below New Kent, just before, I mean, below Dakota, just before you go into James City on New Kent Highway. You turn, if you're going to James City, turn to the west on Sage Road and go about three and a half mile, road dividing into Robus Church Road. McKinney Woods is located on Church, I mean, Robus Church Road on the right-hand side. It's, from what I've seen, still looks like a nice place. The building looks nice, a lot of land. It runs down to the Diamond Creek, where you can use calibos, you can use rowboats, and fish. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I do know that there is a meeting scheduled with Ms. Stewart and R V A, and Ms. Turner, Parks and Rec. They'll be going out there in the next week or two, am I correct? Next is the Regency Administrator's Report. Mr. Wynn?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Hathaway, Marshall, Wynn with V. Dot. This past month, we had one hundred and fifty-six work orders completed, one hundred and twenty-five, and had ten after-hour callouts. Been doing pothole patching and asphalt repair. We repaired four hundred and forty potholes the past two weeks and continue to do that effort until we, you know, get around the whole county and fix all the potholes in the area due to winter operations, basically. Been doing pothole repair, I mean, pipe repairs and installs, ditching and shoulder repairs, tree and brush removal and cleanup, sign repairs and replacement, trash pickup. As y'all know, we had, we've had three snow events, we had three snow events in February, and looking at the ten-day weather forecast, it looks pretty good for the next ten days, and I think we'll be out of the woods, hopefully, knock on wood. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Not unless y'all have any questions.
Mr. Moyer?
Thank you, Mr. Wynn, for all you guys do. Those three events were pretty smooth, we think. It worked out pretty good. Also, I had put a request in for some stuff, ditches on Dispatch Road, and they were taken care of. We appreciate all you guys coming out for that. The ramp on sixty-four, I know it's not maintenance, but they, the ramp on sixty-four that goes westbound from two forty-nine was enlarged and took care of a lot of the problems. The one thing I'd like to ask, if you could mention to the project, whoever's in charge of the project, if they look at that camera that is there, they'll see that the timing on those lights have had some problems in the last several days. They, they don't, they go through three cycles before there's a left-hand turn, and then when there's a left-hand turn, it goes ten seconds, and then it goes to red. So, if you could have them check that out.
All right.
That's it?
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Pearson?
Hi, Mr. Wynn. I just want to thank you so much for your prompt responses. My residents think I'm Superwoman now because you fix things so quickly. So, I'm like, it has nothing to do with me. So, you fixed a lot of potholes that I, I notified you about, and I appreciate that very much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wynn, you guys have a broken-down salt truck in the Joseph Peak Circle. I've had a couple of calls about that, and I told them, I said, well, if it's broken down, we don't have to worry about anybody stealing it.
Right. That, that truck belongs to Interstate Maintenance, and we've made them aware of it and told them they need to move that thing as quick as possible.
Yeah. Okay. I appreciate that. And then the other thing, there's a little small road. It's called Eastview Lane. It runs parallel to Highway sixty, right in front of the Ace Hardware Store, and a constituent of mine has purchased that old building, which I think was formerly an elementary school back in the forties or fifties or something like that. But Dr. Hathaway probably know more about that. But anyway, and she's converting it into a bridal venue, you know, for bridal weddings and stuff like that and everything. And the road has been repaved in many, many years. It's got serious potholes in it. And, like, it's only about an eighth of a mile, and now a new subdivision is built behind, across from the hardware store, and a lot of those residents are using that cut through. And it's only thirteen feet wide. Is there any way it can be repaved and widened slightly?
Is Eastview in our system?
Yes, sir.
Is it in our system?
I think it is.
I'll have to check. I'll, I'll have to check and get back with you.
Okay.
But as far as, I mean, if, if it was a rural rustic years ago, if it's thirteen feet wide, that's the way it will stay. So.
Okay. Okay. All right. I appreciate it. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Stewart?
Mr. Wynn, thank you. Just echoing everyone else, it was very easy to get from my house to Richmond for every snow event. So, thank you for not letting me have a single snow day. And just two things, Forty-seventeenth Good Hope Road, in December, you had said the equipment had to be repaired before that could be fixed. It's where the barrel is on the side of the road where it keeps sinking down.
Yeah, I think there's a, there's a pipe right there that they got on the place. I'll get back with the superintendent on that.
Okay. And then the second thing is, in Holly Fork and Tabernacle, there's a significant amount of erosion that's created a pretty large hole. And the residents said they put it in the system, but it hasn't been addressed yet. So, if you could look at that, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Those are the only two things. Thank you.
All right.
I guess that last rainstorm was pretty significant. I didn't call because I know you couldn't do, you all couldn't do anything, but have you had a chance to go to St. Peter's Church Road yet? That you know, I was gonna call. It looked like a river. I got some videos of it, the residents. I got a call from about eight or ten residents, but it looks like we'd need to do some ditch cleaning. It's gonna, it's gonna take a lot, spend a little time on that, on that to get it straight. But I'll send you the video of it.
Okay. Just, just that corridor right through there?
It came all the way, it was coming off the dirt road, going right down St. Peter's Church. I mean, it looked just like a, a river.
We will take a look?
I know it's probably been, what, five or, five or six years ago, went up there and opened those ditches and stuff. We had to get on some neighborhood. We got some easements, I think, before you back in there.
Okay. We'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right. You thinking?
That's it.
All right. Y'all have a good evening.
You, too.
All right.
We have three presentations this evening. First is Reverend Hatton, Community College Presentation of the Budget Request and Update of New Kent Site Programs. Dr. Kennedy?
Hey, how are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Thank you. Thank you all for having me. I was scheduled to come to your work session, and I would much rather have been with you while I was recovering from the flu that I got while I was traveling. That's no fun whatsoever. So, first up, I'll just quickly on our budget request. It's flat. It's fifty-three, fifty-six is the, is the request. I wanted to tell you a little bit about some of your residents that have attended R C C. In twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, we had seventy-three graduates from New Kent County, and as you know, we serve twelve counties, and that was second only to Gloucester. So, as far as a number. We got a head count of three oh nine, which was fourth. So, continuing to grow when I, when I came here. So, I, I'm here almost six years. So, I kind of base everything on from when I started. And that year, your residents received about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in financial aid. That's federal financial aid and state financial aid. Last year, it was more than double at over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, we're seeing more students, and they're taking advantage of all the opportunities. So, just want to thank you all for that. Thank you for allowing us to have a continued presence here in New Kent County. Our site, it took quite a while, but we did finish the welding lab space in the old cafeteria of the historic school. We are offering dual enrollment classes during the morning and afternoon, and have evening classes Monday through Thursday. And they go, those evening classes go all year round. So, they're scheduled into the summer, and we've got, had great enrollment. So, we've had definite interest. Our next plan, and as you know, in the upstairs section, we have our Diagnostic Medical Sonography Program. That's for training for echocardiogram. I have to tell you one, one story. So, we had our first graduates in December. That is the only lab we have currently. We will be utilizing V C U Tapahannock in the fall, because we are, we are growing that program. One of our first graduates got a job at V C U Health and a twenty-five thousand dollar signing bonus. So, in a, in a year and a half, program was not bad. And those jobs pay over seventy thousand dollars a year. So, we're real pleased with the location. We have it here. Believe it or not, we still have more students coming from the northern neck and middle peninsula. They're driving all the way here. But we do have some coming from Richmond. Just as a reminder, no other community college, none of our sister colleges that surround us, offer that program, and echo only one other community. There's some private providers, but only one other community college offers it. Now, that's Northern Virginia. And of course, we have a nursing lab up there as well. So, our plans for, we still have some space. We do lease the entire cafeteria, and we built out the welding lab, and we were gonna build out for a future lab, but it was cost prohibitive. Those were eye-opening bids. And, but we do, we have received some funding to start a marine electrical program, and we plan to do that in that space. It goes very well with welding. And so, just think it'll be metal structures. They're gonna learn how to be an electrician on a ship. And that's money coming through. It's called the Marine Industrial Base, which is to support the Navy and shipbuilding and submarine building. So, we, those are our future plans, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Dr. Kennedy?
I want, um, like, I could, to see a presentation by the Director of AUKUS down in Newport News, the naval shipbuilding, and you got a shout-out having to do with welding in New Kent. And I gather that's where our students will go to work mainly?
It's one option. I know that you have local needs as well. That's really why we did it there. But it was, it is a strategic location because of the proximity to sixty-four.
They said they'll need ten thousand welders in the next five years.
We're, we're running full classes in three locations. At Glenn's, we have a location at Montross and now New Kent. Really pleased with the dual enrollment participation as well. By, by adding it in New Kent, we shifted, some of the schools shifted around. Some that were coming to Glenn's are coming to New Kent. New Kent didn't, New Kent High School didn't have an opportunity before. Now they do. It's King and Queen and Middlesex come to New Kent, which allowed us to backfill at Glenn's, and so we were able to open it up. We have Lancaster County and Essex County students now. So, thank you for that, because that means we were able to serve more students.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Dr. Kennedy.
Thank you all so much.
Good seeing you. Next item is update on the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-seven New Kent County Community Health Improvement Plan. Chickahomie Health District Representative, Dr. Frank, and Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Hathaway. Thank you, thank you for this opportunity to be up here in front of you and giving us time to give you an update on the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-seven New Kent County Community Health Improvement Plan. I'm just gonna give you just a really brief background that'll lay the, lay the foundation for, for what you're about to hear on this update. Just in the last five or ten years or so, public health has kind of entered its third era. We call it Public Health three point O. And Public Health three point O is all about not only maintaining our previous responsibilities, the traditional public health roles we've had for over a hundred years, but adding to that, being the community health strategist for our individual communities. And what that entails is working with our community partners, building partnerships, and doing such things as community health assessments, community health improvement planning, and basically coming up with strategic focus, strategic planning, to forge a way to improve the health of the community. And so, it's what I consider to be probably the most important thing that I do as a health director. It's, it's strategic planning, and it's, it's, it's got the future of the public's health in mind. And with me today, I've got our chief strategist for the Health Department for the last couple of years, Emily Hines. Emily Hines has stepped up in the last couple of years, and she is our population health planning and improvement coordinator. She spearheaded a lot of the efforts, not only in New Kent County, but also our three other counties that we cover in our district. And she has been organizing community partnerships and has been the force behind a lot of our community health assessments and community health improvement plans, including the New Kent County Improvement Plan, which you, you received a update on last year. And then today, you're gonna hear an update on all of the various activities that have been taking place. And I'm pleased to present Emily Hines.
Thank you, Dr. Frank, and good evening, members of the board. Thank you so much for having me. So, I've had the pleasure to speak to the board a couple of times regarding our community health assessments and improvement plans. Back in two thousand and twenty-two, we published the New Kent County Community Health Assessment, which is a comprehensive report that looks at the current health status of the community. And we started that out by establishing a steering committee, you know, gathering folks from Parks and Rec, Department of Social Services, regional groups such as Thrive, United Way, you name it. We had a lot of people to help us guide this facilitation process. We did a survey that got over three hundred responses. We did key informant interviews, focus groups, and so on, so forth, all to establish health priorities. So, that report was published, and that was really the kickstart to the Community Health Improvement Plan, which is the strategic action planning where you're just detailing the goals, objectives, and strategies of how you're gonna improve health outcomes. And it's much more than health, it's quality of life. So, you know, today I'll be talking a little bit about housing. You know, people don't usually put public health and housing together, but it's, it's every, it's what the air we breathe, it's the water we drink, the house we live in, it's all around us. So, this is the Community Health Improvement Plan that was published that you can read on your own time, and I have that Q. R. code on the handout at the front. So, the Community Health Improvement Plan, like I said, is a five-year plan that, you know, is cyclical. So, we'll probably do this again in five years. And we started to implement this plan May first of two thousand twenty-three, and we just completed our first year this summer. So, we're currently in year two. And that plan is centered around three health priorities that the community set forth, you know. You know, we gathered the data, presented it to them, and these are what they selected in a multi-voting process. That's mental health and substance use, including nicotine and alcohol, healthcare access and quality, and lastly, affordable and safe housing. So Chickahominy Health District at this point is in charge of monitoring and evaluating the plan. It is utmost important to us to have this plan work for the community and not sit on a shelf. So we review this quarterly by collecting data, providing technical assistance and sharing that with the community because we want to brag about all the great stuff that's happening in New Kent County. So we report annually a more comprehensive report that looks at the progress of each strategy and also the health, health outcomes that you get from secondary sources such as county health rankings or the U.S. Census. And that report is available on our website. So now I'm going to kind of go over a high-level overview of the progress within each health priority. So we have fifteen strategies in total for our mental health and substance use priority. Eight of those are in progress, four have been completed and three were removed or haven't been started due to barriers. Going to quickly highlight some priority successes within this. And New Kent County Public Schools hired two student support specialists. New Kent Parks and Rec installed three Share the Air signs as part of a campaign at the local parks. Henrico Mental Health and Developmental Services, which serves New Kent County, has secured funding to obtain a mobile unit to disperse medication-assisted treatment, also known as MAT. Thrive Virginia established a parent support group here. Two everyday strong trainings were provided through United Way and held in the county. And twenty-two revived trainings, which is naloxone, were held in New Kent. Healthcare access and quality. So there's a total of nine strategies, seven are in progress, two are complete and zero have been removed or not started. Some highlights include Bay Transit held three listening sessions with older adults to understand their transportation needs. Purpose medical outreach is in the process of building a freestanding clinic. The SPAN Center, also formerly known as Senior Connections, hosted three workshops in New Kent County focused around disease management. And lastly, Chickahominy Health District coordinated a free health fair in Barhamsville. And that Purpose Medical Outreach attended that, so did VCU, it's our Massey Cancer Center. The last priority is the affordable and safe housing. We have a total of eight strategies, six are in progress, two have been completed and zero have been removed or not started. Highlights include the Housing Advisory Committee began meeting in May of two thousand and twenty-four and there are three subcommittees within that, including safe housing, new housing and research. It's my understanding that you all received a presentation on February eighteenth to get more in-depth updates, but I'm very, very much looking forward to seeing what this committee presents. It's been an honor to be a part of establishing that. That group is very dedicated. Some of the members sit in this very room and I really believe that New Kent County is going to be like the foundation of what other counties in the state, if not just the Eastern Seaboard look to as far as how to address housing issues. So overall, there's thirty-two strategies. Twenty-one are work in progress, eight are complete and three have been removed. If we stay on this trajectory, we will not get a hundred percent complete because this is a living plan, but I'm very confident that we'll be able to accomplish most of the strategies in the plan. And this is all to be the most accessible, inclusive, safe and healthy county to thrive and grow in Virginia. We hope to meet our vision. So my call to action to the board members and the residents of New Kent County is to sign up for our quarterly newsletter. As someone who receives lots of emails, I understand one more email seems like too much, but it's a one-minute read, very quick highlights of, that you'll receive every three months to stay in the know with the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-seven New Kent Community Health Improvement Plan. We have two meetings a year that are held online or in person or both that you can attend and that information is in the newsletter. And of course, this is a living document, needs change, so we can include new strategies in this plan. Just reach out to me. So there's the QR code to sign up. Otherwise, it's also on the handout that I provided in the stay in the know section. If you'd like to sign up to receive those quarterly updates. And thank you very much. I think I got my point.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
I just have one.
Ms. Stewart?
On the, the mental health and substance use page where it says there are three strategies removed or not started, were those removed or not started?
So those were removed.
Okay. And it, just because their barriers are insurmountable currently or?
That's a great question. So this was with a local mental health organization. They were having some staffing issues. They were hoping to host like organizational mental health trainings, just kind of travel around, but they had staffing issues and didn't have capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moy.
Mr. Chairman, do we have enough providers in New Kent? Is that something that we should be dealing with?
So as far as primary care providers, so whether that's doctors, there's definitely a gap as far as, you know, the indicator that I look at is the primary care physicians ratio. And I think if I remember correctly, I think we're at least double compared to like Virginia. So there is a need here for more primary care. And I'm hoping, you know, we have had lots of discussions with VCU and still stay in touch with them as far as potential pipelines with students coming to assist here, but that is definitely a need. It's just a shortage, not only in New Kent or Virginia, it's the whole nation. So it's a, it's a huge issue.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you for your presentation this evening.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Frank. Last presentation this evening is the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six County Administrator's Budget Presentation. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. You have before you this evening the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, my recommendation for upcoming fiscal year budget. The proposed budget totals one hundred and thirty-one million, seventy-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. I will say this number reflects no increase in the real estate rate, although a little later on in the presentation, I will talk about two other options, potential projects that could impact the, the real estate rate. This number also reflects a school budget of fifty-three million, sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. It does not include the public utility budget, which is a standalone budget and generates, and operates off of income and revenue that it generates. But that budget totals seventeen million, three hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. The current value of one penny on the real estate rate is five hundred and forty thousand dollars, six hundred and two dollars. This builds in our collection rate for our real estate property collections. I won't spend much time on this slide, but this is a breakdown of our revenues and the sources and where all of our revenues come from within the county and how we get to that one hundred and thirty-one million dollars. We'll spend a little more time on this slide on Friday during our budget retreat. We've included a breakdown here of our expenditures and how our money is spent. I believe that this graph is, is no different than, than many localities. The numbers change, may be different because of the size of our budget, but proportionately I would say that it's very similar to other localities as well. General fund revenues, we'll focus on this for just a second. It does reflect a decrease of seven point three million dollars. We're not really losing general fund revenues. We're not collecting less real estate taxes. It's only an accounting matter here where we have taken the Colonial Downs revenue out of our general fund and we've created a separate fund for our Colonial Downs revenue. As you've seen the spreadsheets in the past, we've been tracking those revenues through a series of spreadsheets. Now, when you want reports on expenditures for Colonial Downs revenues, we'll be able to go into our financial system and just print a report. But, and that's a huge amount. That's minus ten million dollars and that's what leads to the deficit really. We are experiencing about two point eight million dollars in increased revenue from the previous fiscal year. And we'll get into that two point eight million dollars, a large portion of that two point eight million of, of new revenue. It goes to proposed personnel actions that I am recommending for next fiscal year. In fact, the way that you get to the two point eight personnel actions is one point nine. I am recommending an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our school system. And we have an additional about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars that we set aside in our contingency right now. And that will, that equates to the two point eight million dollars. But looking at the promote, proposed personnel actions for next fiscal year, there are some new positions that are requested. You'll see a lot of new positions and position upgrades from staff that works in our courthouse. That is solely because of the amount of activity that we are experiencing in our courts right now. A couple of years ago, the laws changed, which has resulted in a lot more jury trials, which has caused a lot of additional work. Not only that, we switched jail systems and they have a different way of operating, which has increased the caseload too. So in order to keep up, we are looking at some new positions for the circuit court clerk, our Commonwealth attorney, also increase, which is really an increase of a part-time position. Community development in our building department, we're asking for a new permit technician. And I, I will say, in our building department, last year, we experienced a record year and as far as the issuance of building permits. And we don't see that slowing down anytime and that staff is in need of some assistance. General services, we have taken on additional properties in the county and we still have the same one person to maintain all of those properties and cut those grass and, and do what's needed to make our sites look good. We do need an additional grounds and maintenance technician. We're also asking for an additional GIS technician. They have an incredible amount of responsibility and we only have one person that, that's in charge of the GIS operations. So we are asking for, to create a new position, a technician position. Also, position upgrades, circuit court clerk, there's four positions there. We've looked at other positions within our county. We've looked at other positions, similar positions outside of our county, and we've determined that the current salaries within that department need to be upgraded. That department has experienced a lot of turnover and a lot of that is because of the current salaries. Commonwealth attorney, we're asking for a salary adjustment for an administrative assistant, again, to help keep up with the caseloads there. In the community development and building department, a position upgrade for a building inspector, one to a building inspector, two. We have a position, our deputy building official, who is nearing retirement and has been kind enough to, to let us know that within the next couple of years, he's going to be looking at retiring. So we have an opportunity now to train and prepare staff from within to step up into that position. Community development, upgrading our environmental inspector position to an environmental manager. We did some reconfiguration last year by bringing the building, planning and environmental offices under one umbrella, creating the community development department. Currently, building and planning have managers that see the day-to-day, environmental doesn't. Our community development director does his duty and the duties of the environmental manager position. So we are looking to fill that position and we will not, and this is a position upgrade, which we will not backfill the position that will be promoted. We also, well, e- every budget process, we look at all of our salaries just to make sure that they're, they're where they need to be and consistent with the market. This year, we spent some time looking at our director salaries and there were two directors we feel that was not consistent with the rest, based on their tenure here with the county and based on the market, what other localities are offering. So I'm proposing to upgrade the salary of our fire chief as well as our Parks and Recreation Director. And we're proposing an upgrade in the treasurer's office to upgrade the deputy treasurer two to a deputy treasurer three. This person has recently received a certification that, that justifies the increase. Other personnel actions in the FY twenty-six budget, I am recommending a five percent COLA for all county employees. The state has approved a three percent increase for constitutional officers and comp board-funded staff. We get money from the state, we'll pass that money on to, to those positions. The state has also approved, and I say approved, the budget has been approved and now it sits on the, the governor's desk for final approval, so technically it's not approved. But the, the General Assembly has approved a one point five percent bonus for constitutional officers and their staff. We are recommending to pass that on to constitutional officers and comp board-funded positions, but it always creates an issue where you have departments and maybe half or a few members are funded with comp board funds and the rest aren't. So we're proposing that all staff under the constitutional officers receive a one and a half percent increase. We are also looking at a seven point three percent health insurance increase. That's what we've been informed by our health insurance provider, Anthem. Originally, the communication from Anthem was to plan for a twenty percent increase. Our original plan was that the county would cover ten percent and the employees' premium would increase by ten percent. That has been downgraded to a seven point three percent increase. And since we had already set aside the money, I am proposing that we absorb the full seven point three percent. And like I said, we originally were planning for ten percent. So I'm also recommending that we have a health insurance holiday, one month out of the year, which will probably be December if this budget is approved. Our employees would not have to pay their, their premiums for one month out of the year. Public utilities budget, they've also asked for upgrading a part-time billing and customer service assistant to a full-time position. We all know the county's growing, so there's more utility bills going out, more payments coming in. So we are asking to upgrade a part-time position to a full-time position, as well as the public utilities department would also receive a five percent cost of living increase. as the public utilities department would also receive a 5% cost of living increase. I mentioned employee compensation benefits. This shows the cost of the 5% COLA across the board. Health insurance rate, 7.3% increase absorbed by the county fully. Health insurance premium holiday, the cost of that is $60,634. And we are budgeting an 8% increase for our liability insurance. We've not received that information from our provider yet. I'm sorry, that's, well, VML, which is the old name, Snilversa, but same thing. We've not received the information yet, so hopefully it comes in less than 8%, but for budgeting purposes, we're budgeting an 8% increase. Capital projects, at your previous meeting, I went over all of the capital projects. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but you have before you in your slide, a list of all the capital projects that have been proposed, totaling $25 million. Where does that funding come from? Colonial Downs, 6 million of our capital projects are funded with Colonial Downs revenues. Our capital fund balance is funding 10 million. Central Virginia Transportation Authority funds, which is the CVTA. There's $5 million worth of transportation projects proposed for next fiscal year and state and federal grants total $2.9 million to get to the 25 million. Public utility funds, which I'll briefly go over this because we'll spend a lot of time on this on Friday. We'll have Davenport at our budget retreat on Friday that will work through the public utilities pro forma. We are recommending a 4% user rate increase for next fiscal year. And we will go over the business model to show you how we got to that, that 4%, but it's simply based on how much revenue we're collecting in the planned expenditures for next year. Connection and availability fees, we are recommending no changes to our current fees. The proposed FY26 budget totals $25.7 million. The adopted current year budget is $17 million. It's a big increase, but there are some significant capital projects that are proposed for next fiscal year and they're in the current capital improvement program. FY26 capital projects, there you go, total $17.3 million. And as I've mentioned, we'll go over the business model and those capital projects at the budget retreat. This is a list of the proposed capital projects. There are some, some big projects such as water system interconnections. As you know, we're in the process of tying a lot of our independent water systems together to create one centralized system, all moving towards eventually a water withdrawal project where we will withdraw water from the Pumonkie River and then tie into that loop that we are creating now. Brickshower water tank, in order to preserve the water pressure in the Brickshower community, there is a need for additional water storage and that would involve a new water tank. Now, everything that I've mentioned so far, as far as the general fund excluding the public utility fund, all of that is being proposed with no increase on our tax rate. We can cover that with the current 59 cent rate. But as I've mentioned previously, there are some potential projects and potential requests that you have received. And I've put together a plan, if we are to fund those projects, of what it would take. We have received a request from our schools for the replacement of the current New Kent Elementary School by building a new elementary school. And we've received a request from our judge for the replacement of our current courthouse. Those projects, right now, we're estimating both projects at $130 million. Still very early in the planning of those projects, have very little engineering and architectural work done. I'm hoping that as we do more engineering and architectural work, we'll be able to fine-tune those numbers and get that $130 million number down. But I do know the schools have just began the process. I think they've scheduled their first focus group meeting to look at the design of the new elementary school. At your previous meeting, you've hired mostly architects to work with the courthouse staff to do a feasibility study so we can determine what size courthouse we actually need and start to get some, some better cost estimates on, on that project as well. But for right now, we have a working number of $130 million. How do we fund that? $130 million with a 30-year financing is an annual debt service of $8.5 million. To cover that debt service financing of $8.5 million with one penny that equals $400, $540,000, you would need 16 cents if we were totally looking at increasing the tax rate to cover this new debt service, which I know that that's not feasible. So it has really challenged staff to think outside of the box and come up with a creative financing plan to make this project more feasible and we've done just that. Again, $130 million, financing term of 30 years. We've put together a schedule that includes a fall borrowing, fall 2026 borrowing. More than likely, we would borrow through the, I believe it's VSA and VSPA for the schools. You can only borrow from those entities during certain points of, certain times of the year. I believe they have a spring borrowing and a fall borrowing. And I say more than likely, in the past, we've gotten to better rates. We're going to do an evaluation of where we get the best rates from. But the advantage with going through those organizations is it's a pool finance. So it might be seven or eight other localities that have borrowing needs too, and those organizations pull all of those projects. So you do get some savings with the larger borrowings. I would recommend that there be an initial funding contribution of $5 million to this project to cover the annual debt service. And we will walk you through the specifics of our financing plan on Friday. Davenport and associates will be here to lead that. But the debt service would require FY26 rate increase, real estate rate increase of two cents. And then for the next two years, '27 and '28, there's a potential that another two cents could be required in those years too. So it could take, and this is worst case scenario, it could take a total of six cents to fund this project. And why I say this is worst case scenario, I mean, each year when we get to 2027, when we get to 2028, we're going to look at and evaluate our growth and growth in revenues and we may be able to absorb a good portion of those increases in the out years. So it may not be six, it may be five, it may be four, but worst case scenario, six cents is what we're looking at.
Mr. Hathaway, is some of that due to the fact that we're paying off some of our debt too, right? Is that why it's not impactful?
That, that is a huge reason that we're able to borrow that much money and worst case scenario, only need six cents. Within the next five years, we will pay off the sheriff's standards, the vehicle maintenance facility, the health and human services building. And because of that, we were able to do that. And really, that $5 million initial contribution really is to get us through the next five years of debt service until things drop and we're just, and those debts are paid off.
Yeah. Mr. Hathaway, also, won't the high school be paid off?
I'm sorry, the hostel is part of that as well. Hostel is a big part of that as well. That's the largest borrowing we currently have.
And that alone frees up, what, $5 million, right?
Just, just under $5 million, yes.
All right, thank you.
Did I understand you correctly, Mr. Hathaway, that there is an advantage to borrowing this much at one time in the form of a potential savings?
Well, it's an advantage of going through the VPSA and VSA because we are borrowing a huge amount of money, because our borrowing is wrapped into, it could be 10 other localities that's borrowing too. So because of that large amount, you tend to get better rates.
Is there a way that we can quantify that ahead of time or is that just, we know based on experience at that point?
We will quantify that ahead of time. Before we do any borrowing, Davenport and associates will do an analysis and they will tell us, you know, what's our best route to get the best rate. We may even, we just haven't gotten to that decision point yet, we may even put something out to bid to see if we can get anything better than the VPSA or VSA. We've done that in the past.
Thank you.
Mr. Hathaway, I do think, Mr. Steers probably remembers, but when we put off that borrowing for the last elementary school, I think we did, like you said, both ways. So we had a bunch of different proposals to get, and we ended up with a pretty good rate on what we built that elementary school.
Yes.
It's cheaper than this one.
All right. I'm nearing the end of my presentation, but I do want, there is another item that will be before you for your consideration, and that's public safety. Right now, Chesterfield, Henrico, Hanover, Goochland, localities, there are partners in the region, but I also consider them our competitors a little bit because we're all competing for manpower. Their starting salary for firefighters right now are over $61,000 a year. New Kent's starting salary for firefighters right now is just over $49,000 a year. That's huge and it makes us less competitive and it, it, it's very difficult with recruiting and retention. Also, the county is experiencing salary compression issues as current employees are not moving through the pay grade appropriately. We're seeing issues where we're bringing on new staff that's making almost as much as people that have been here five or six years or even longer. So compression is an issue in our public safety, our sheriff's office and fire and rescue. And there's another issue too with management positions. In the sheriff's office and fire and rescue office, we've noticed that they are significantly below equal management positions in surrounding localities. So we have a starting pay issue, we have a compression issue, and we have an issue of our managers as far as their pay too. I've been working with our public safety leadership, our fire chief, insurance department, our human resources department and our finance department to come up with a solution. And the solution that we would like for you to consider is establishing a pay plan for our public safety officials. This is an example of what that pay plan would look like. Where we have reconfigured the pay grades and starting positions for those paid positions and each year, and this just goes five years out, but the actual plan is a 25-year plan. But each year, there will be an increase in pay, sort of a tenure incentive to stay with us and, which pushes them through the pay grade scale. I have an example below. This is John Doe, but it's really an actual firefighter. I've just taken their, their name out. They were hired in May of 2009. They've been with us for 15 years, almost 16 years. So we would go to the pay plan and look at firefighters, which is a PS2 pay grade, and then go out to the scale 15 years and their proposed salary would be $66,550. It is a $10,000, $10,680 increase from what they are currently making. And remember, I previously said our starting salary is $49,000. This individual has been with us 15 years and it's not too far from that, that starting salary. There is also an ALS incentive of $2,000. This is a current practice that we have for providing those financial incentives to those that receive those ALS certifications. And there's the ALS A and the ALS P. I and I certification.
Mr. Hathaway, we're going to get into, the chief and the sheriff are going to be at our retreat.
Yes.
Kind of get, dive into this.
Yes, yes.
I have another question for that. For, on Friday, Sheriff and Chief Opet, is it possible to have salary data for, because I know here we list under public safety Chesterfield, Henrico and Hanover, but looking at a few slides ahead on slide 18 with the real estate tax rates, would it be possible to have the salary information for counties that have tax rates closer to ours like Powhatan, Charles City, Middlesex, King William? Because I know we talked about Goochland being kind of our comparison, but I think, you know, comparing us to Chesterfield at 90 cents may be a little unrealistic. So could we have that data to just bounce off?
The cost to implement the proposed play, pay plan is $1.1 million. We were able to bring that cost down by stating that, by making a change to the budget that's being proposed, we would not pass on the 5% salary increase to public safety employees because they are, a good majority of them would be receiving significant increases. Not everybody, but those that don't, you want to make them whole too by looking at providing a bonus if your increase is below a certain amount so that everybody gets something that nobody uses. By backing out the 5% salary increase, we were able to bring down the cost of the, well, the amount of money needed to fund the pay plan to about $540,000, which essentially is one cent on our tax rate. So therefore, to fund the proposed pay plan, it would require a one cent increase in our tax rate. So our current tax rate is 59 cents per 100. The new courthouse and elementary school construction would require a two cent increase. The public safety pay plan would require a one cent increase, giving you a proposed real estate tax rate of 62 cents. How did that line up in the region? We're still in the bottom half of localities in the Richmond region, middle peninsula region and peninsula region as far as tax rate, even with the 62 cent tax rate, that still puts us in, keeps us in the bottom half. I would also just like to bring to your attention, we all know that this is the case, but one of the big reasons for the 5% salary increase that I'm proposing, because if you look over the past five years, the consumer price index has increased 36.3%, which means the dollar in 2020 is worth far less than it is today as far as buying power in 2025. We are looking to provide our employees some relief in the proposed 5% salary increase. And, you know, the CPI, for those who aren't familiar with the consumer price index, it's just an indicator of inflation. It measures the average change over time in prices paid by consumers for a basket of goods and services. So it's no surprise or anything to any of us. that things are more expensive today. Therefore, and we're noticing that in as far as the request for salary increases. Schedule, we, as I've mentioned, we have a budget retreat planned for March fourteenth. We are anticipating a public hearing on tax rates and fees at the April fourteenth regular meeting. Public hearing on the budget at the May sixth regular meeting. State code requires separate public hearings for tax rates and the, the regular budget. And adoption of the budget at the May twenty-seventh work session. State code requires that you have to wait a certain period of time after the public hearing before you can take action on the, on the budget. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Anybody have any questions?
I just have two last quick questions. The salary increase, the five percent for all employees, does that count as well for the upgraded positions? I used to talk of, would they get the upgrade plus the five percent? Or is that calculated on there?
It's not calculated. Okay, it is not, the five percent is not calculated in the upgraded positions.
Okay, and then are we live streaming our retreat on Friday for residents or?
Um, we do not have plans to livestream. This is the first time we've used this facility. The meetings are open to the public and our budget retreat begins at nine AM at the VCU Rice Rivers Center. The agenda is online so you can get the address there. I can look, I, I need, I'm not sure of their Wi-Fi capability at that facility, but if that's something.
Maybe it was more of my question is how is the cell phone service there? It's like a forestry center, it's not for us.
Yeah, probably not much better, but I can call them.
Okay, thank you.
And, and your presentation is available online that you gave this evening.
Yes, and the full budget recommendation, which would shows the line item expenditures for each budget will be on, will be posted to our website tomorrow morning.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Hathaway.
Thank you.
We have one public hearing this evening. The Eastern Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority, our EDA Director, Ms. Hurt, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Before you, you have the joiner agreement and the ordinance for the Eastern Virginia Regional Industrial Facilities Authority. A presentation was given to the board November two thousand and twenty-four by the Hampton Roads Alliance about the EV RIFA. So before you is consideration of approval of the ordinance and we would recommend approving from the board to join the EV RIFA because it leverages additional dollars for site acquisition and/or improvements for the county. It also would provide the county an option to invest and share revenues for real estate with other partners in the EV RIFA. The joining fee for the EV RIFA is one thousand, two hundred and fifty and then they have, they have annual operational dues of the amount of two thousand dollars. So we'd look at three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the initial year. Now I'm available to answer any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hurt. I know that we did have a presentation the other month. So before the board asks questions to you, I'll open a public hearing, see if anyone signed up. We have one person signed up. I'll call your name and ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will be given three minutes. Mr. James Poole.
Greetings, folks. It's been a long time. I went through paperwork on this, looked at the state act which creates these industrial facility authorities. And one of the things I discovered when I looked at it is that the state act basically creates an independent entity in all form, in all legal form, buying property, taking out loans. It's completely independent. So when a project occurs in a municipality, basically, the board loses all power over it. The property is actually owned by the authority. I looked at the bylaws for the Eastern Virginia Authority and you, you, how do you say that so quickly?
EV RIFA.
EV RIFA, that's it, that's great. I'm trying to figure out a way to say that quickly. EV RIFA, I looked at their bylaws and basically it mirrors what the state code says. It points out what their authorities are and it also points out the relationship of the member municipalities to the authority. And I went through the minutes for their board for two thousand and twenty-four and at least the ones that are published. And there were thirteen entities as of their August twenty-ninth meeting. If Norfolk joined them, that makes fourteen and if we joined them, that would be fifteen. So our control over a project in our county becomes one fifteenth of the overall board for this authority, which means it's no longer really in the hands of these five people up here that I know and love and stand in front of in the past. The, the matters that they, that this authority board dealt with over the course of their meetings in two thousand and twenty-four, as I say, the published minutes, I don't have all of their meetings, but basically, they were doing two things. One, they were counting coup on who they could get to join their authority. And the second thing is they were dealing with one warehouse project in York County that they own. And in reading the matters they were dealing with, talking to DEQ, talking to, talking to VDOT, underground tanks that they didn't know were there, all of the sorts of things that I have sat in this room more than once and listened to five people up here solve all of these problems before. And for better or for worse, it's nicer to hear it from people that I know and people that are responsible to taxpayers in New Kent County. And basically, I would point out that joining this authority means whatever they do here, we taxpayers don't have input in. Is that it?
Yep.
There it is. I'm just a little smudge.
Thank you, Ms. Poole. Good seeing you again. All right, no one else signed up, so I'll close the, the public hearing. Any questions for Ms. Hurt?
I think you probably could rebut that about the, how we lose control over our own property.
Correct. So, so to address the first concern, the authority being separate from the locality, similar to how we have our economic development authority set up legally through the state, we do have to have a separate entity created which will allow the county and the EV RIFA to own property, to do improvements to the property. So it is a legal requirement. In terms of projects not in the hand of the county, I, I would point to the slide thirteen, which is referenced. I know you all have the slide deck in front of you, but essentially what that states is should the county decide to participate in a project, they, they can then decide to invest. They have one project currently with the EV RIFA and that is the York County project. New Kent was not part of the EV RIFA at the time, so we would not be recipients of any revenues for the York County project. And if the county chose not to participate or even offer a site that we wanted to develop, we are not required to do that as part of this.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just add one thing. If we did choose to participate in one of these transactions, there would be a participation agreement that would come back before this board that you all would have to approve, that would set up the rules of the, of the game for that transaction. And if you did not approve it, we would not participate.
Correct. Thank you, Josh.
So if I, if I, if I could make an example, say if a project came up in Isle of Wight and it came above to that board and they offered us the ability to be part, be ten percent of the project or something like that, we would then receive the ten percent of the, of the revenues from that and, and we would contribute at a, at a rate of ten percent, but no more, no less?
It would all be set up in the agreement. So it could be, you receive ten percent of the revenues from the sale of the property and that would be the end of the agreement. It could be that for the next ten years, you would receive the revenues from the real estate and the taxes. So they're all, it would all be individually set up based on each project.
But that project would come to us first to be looked at and we decide not to be engaged in that. We don't have to be.
That's correct. And in the same situation, if the county wanted to acquire or, or if there was an opportunity to acquire or make improvements to a piece of land where we knew there was good potential for industrial development, if we wrote and we would structure the agreement so that it was favorable to the county and if we wrote up an agreement and could not get the other counties to agree, then we would not move forward with the agreement.
Ms. Hurt, is, how long has this organization been in place?
It has been since two thousand and eight, two thousand and eighteen, just for the EV RIFA. But there are other RIFAs in the state of Virginia that have been around much longer.
I guess my biggest concern with it was we'd be, we would be taking New Kent taxpayers' money to, to fund these projects if we want to go into another locality?
Well, if we choose to do so.
If we chose to do that, right. I just think New Kent has got all these locations. I think we're the best place to do business and I don't know if I want to share my revenue. But I understand what you're saying. It does good site work. So I don't know, I just, I just have a little, little concern about it. Because there's only been one project in this EV RIFA, correct?
Correct.
And this is still ongoing?
Yes, I believe they are almost out of land at that site as well. The benefit to the county, if we ever chose, the suggestion here is not to move forward with a specific project. It's simply to join the RIFA. The benefit to the county, if we had, we have a lot of sites in the county that have wetlands or other impacts. And in order to get sites ready for development, that costs a lot of additional money and some of which not all private developers have the money to do. So there are, you know, chances where we might identify a site that would be cost prohibitive, but if we can leverage other dollars for that, we can control how much we share with those other investors. So there, there could be opportunities, but again, that's not a part of this.
You don't have to do it.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
So this, this is one of the things that Chesterfield and Henrico do on their own and basically fund site management and getting sites ready for Lego, Arm, Amazon and all those others. This is the ability, if we had a site like that, we could go ask to have help to develop that site.
Correct. And we could, if we owned the property, we could control, have some control over who purchased the property or what kind of company located there. So a lot of times publicly owned sites, they may turn down projects and decide not to sell to certain companies because it might not be a good fit. So it, it gives us an opportunity. But again, that's not part of this.
Anyone else, Ms. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm not real fond of this program, to be honest with you. And I, I feel like you look at all the businesses that have come to this county, like AutoZone and we got CarMax coming and we've got Lars coming. We've got Buc-E's coming. We've got an upscale grocer coming. We've done all this on our own. And, you know, I, I just, I'm a little reluctant to join the regional board and then, and then they used to say that the initial fee is twelve hundred and fifty dollars and in addition, an operational dues and two thousand. What's it gonna be next year?
I don't believe they've increased that. I think that's been the standard from.
They've only been operating since two thousand and eighteen, right?
Sure.
So have, have there been any increases on any of the localities that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
That's it, thank you.
I mean, is this our only opportunity to join this organization? So if we were to decide not to do it tonight, could we revisit it in a year when maybe their original project matured a bit? Or are we just invited now and?
Well, we are not, we, this would not allow us to be a part of the York County project.
Right.
But yes, you could revisit this anytime to join the RIFA.
So I think my only, or not only concern, but my chief concern was that they have only had the one project and their website was a little sketchy on records and minutes and such. So when I was trying to do research, I didn't find as, like, this is a great presentation, it was helpful, but just as an average citizen looking at their website didn't have as much as I would hope it would have. But I think that as that project matures, maybe it's something to look at in the future.
I do know the Alliance has taken over management of the administration. I would hope more of the recent documents are, are, are on there, but.
I was like, this was when we had the presentation is when I looked. So it might be different now.
Anyone else?
Just personally, I'm not comfortable with voting on that this, this evening. I, I think we need to do a little bit more research and maybe, I don't know, talk to some other localities or something.
We can all, like you, like you said, we can always come back and revisit, join it at a later time. So is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table the decision to join this organization to a latter day.
Deny it, right?
Well, the, the, the board could table the discussion for a year. They could deny it. Whenever the board does intend to take it back up, if the board so intends to take it back up, we would need to do a public hearing and re-advertise it. That's really the only thing. So if we do bring it back, we have to go through that process again. But the motion on the floor is a motion to table. The board could approve that motion and we could come back later or somebody could, we could vote on that motion and deny the motion to table and then someone could make a motion to deny the ordinance zero one twenty-five.
Then Roberts rules, if that's not taken up within a year, doesn't it have to be taken up within a year?
No, not, not for this. For cer, for certain land use decisions, we do need to take it up for a year. But something like this, you could, there's a motion to postpone indefinitely and that's how I would interpret the motion on the floor.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Ms. Watkins, poll members?
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
And Mr. Avell?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Hurt. Next is elected official report. Ms. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Firstly, Greg Reimer and I, the school board member from District Five, are going to be. Firstly, Greg Reimer and I, the school board member from District 5, are going to be having our rescheduled office hours on March 18 at 6:00 at Luconis. Again, you don't have to eat with us, but just come and talk to us. And Mr. Smith, as we said earlier, we're going to meet in the next couple of weeks at McHemmy Woods. So I want to make sure you get that information after we meet. And then today, I was with the Central Virginia Waste Management Authority for the Bucks for Boxes program, where they reward residents with a $100 gift card for flattening and properly recycling their boxes to try to incentivize and encourage recycling. So we did, we were the only locality out of all of their member localities that hadn't gotten one yet, and we did get to reward a resident in, I think, Mr. Evelyn's district today with a $100 gift card. So that was really cool. But other than that, just I hope to see you all on March 18.
Mrs. Steers?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to report at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have several things. So this Saturday is a big day here in New Kent County. It's the Virginia Derby, so if you haven't gotten tickets, come out and watch some ponies with us. Also, there is a 2025 Women's Health and Resources Fair that is going to be over in the parking lot of the Health and Human Services Building. Again, I wanted to just mention the Chamber of Commerce is hosting the New Kent Connect on March 18 at 6:00 PM at the New Kent Visitor Center. I am having office hours there also, not at the visitor center, next door at Station Number Five, so you can come see me and then run over there and go see them, or vice versa. Heather Mae Donbroski will not be at that office hours event. She had something else come up. So it'll just be me, but come in and talk to me. I'm all ears. What else do I have? Let's see. The Historic Virginia Land Conservancy is hosting a conservation celebration at the Glebe in Charles City on March 30 from 1:00 to 4:00. There'll be live music, oysters, and barbecue. The purpose of the event is to celebrate conservation of our region's rural lands. On April 16, just save the date, that is the proposed date for the shredding, tire recycling, and electronics, glasses and hearing aid, plastic bag recycling at 9:00 here in this parking lot. The Rabies Clinic has been moved to April 19. And also, please consider helping to rebuild the Jamestown 4-H Camp facilities after damage sustained from recent storms. There's a website that you can go to, that's www.jamestown4hcenter.org/giving. They are really looking to, there was quite a bit of damage to the facilities, and quite a few of our children use that facility in the summertime for camp, so. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Moyer?
Yes, there's a span, what we heard before, Senior Connection. There's a meeting at the library on the 25th at 9:00. That's for any senior citizens, want to come out and find out some stuff about what kind of scams are out there, what kind of ideas for medical insurance. Also, there is the Chickahominy Triad Spring Fling, which is April 16.
Here in New Kent, we have so many charitable organizations, and I've been speaking with the schools and some of these organizations over the last few weeks. They give so many, they have so many scholarships available to our seniors, and it's amazing how many seniors, how many scholarships don't even, no one even applies to. So it's that time of year, seniors, I would love for you to listen to this message, go out and apply for these scholarships. The citizens of this county give a lot back, and so I would get the parents to get your seniors, get involved, and fill out those scholarships, it's free money. So that's all I have. Staff reports?
I would just like to let you know that this afternoon, the sheriff, chief deputy, and fire chief, and I received an email from CSX notifying us that during the last week of March, they will begin construction on their rail lines, maintenance on their rail lines that could cause and most likely will cause closures. Some could last up to three days, and they will be establishing a plan to reroute traffic, but just be on the lookout. I believe it's starting March 26, on or about, and it'll impact all of the crossings along the rail lines of CSX.
I think that email came out real late this evening.
Afforded it, yes.
Does the chief or sheriff have anything you want to add to that?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. They advise us that the first intersection that they're going to work on is Riverside and South Waterside, and then they're going to start working west, pretty much all the way down to the Charles City line. So they'll hit every one. The colonies, going into the colonies, that is complete, but they'll, once they hit, once they hit there at South Waterside, they'll go down to Rockahawk, and Allen, all the way down into Providence Forge, and then down into the Charles City line. So if there's homes behind them, they should be done in about 12 hours, but don't guarantee that, it depends on the weather. And they have laid out already the detours that they'll go, you will be able to get into your communities, but you may have to do the detour along the tracks that they normally do. So they are working on that, too.
Any questions?
How are we letting residents know about that? Because I know, like, the example on the Chickahominy shores, people are going to be very concerned.
We will be sending out social media releases indicating where they will, where their work is scheduled to be with the detour information as well. I know that'll go out through the sheriff's office app, social media, and we'll get that to the county as well, so that can go on the county site as well.
Will there be, you know, the signs out there saying it's going to be, you know, like the VDOT signs, getting one a day or two before?
That I have to check and see. We can certainly work to put message boards in the area. Obviously, we've got limited space, so we can certainly try to do what we can with message boards, just to alert the public as best we can of where they will be.
I'd say if you could definitely do that, like, near my driveway before the Chickahominy shores, that would be really helpful. Because I know, I'll say I'm on the other side, but I know everybody that's not on my side is going to be greatly affected.
The fire chief just said the contractor will be putting them out. So obviously, there will be more in-depth plan that fire, sheriff's office, we will all work through to, with the contractor as well, to make sure that the public is notified of.
I just want to make sure anybody that has to be anywhere in a time-sensitive fashion is able to do that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all. Next, appointments. Any appointments delegated by district? Appointments not delega, I'm sorry.
Mr.?
Ms. Steers.
Excuse me. I move to appoint Amy Pearson as District 4 Representative to the Seniors Volunteer Hall of Fame Selection Committee to serve a two-year term beginning January 13, 2025, and ending December 31, 2026.
Oh, the board one? Okay. Well, that's, this is about, so, that would be, not delegated by districts?
The board members.
Okay. So we don't have any, right? Next is not delegated by district?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Elsie Sandusky as an at-large representative to the Clean County Committee to complete a term ending December 31, 2026.
We also have Chelsea. Oh, whose district?
Who hasn't opened? It's you, Tom.
Okay.
I moved a point, Chesney Nagy, as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth, New
Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term ending December Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members on boards and commissions not delegated by district?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other appointment that I'd like to make. I'd like to appoint Amy Pearson as the board representative to the Seniors Volunteer Hall of Fame Selection Committee to complete a two-year term ending December 31, 2026.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Steers. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Abstain.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Congratulations. Next, regional boards and commissions? There are none. That ends our agenda for this evening. So the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, April 14, 2025, and the next work session will be held at 9:00 AM on Wednesday, March 26, 2025, both in the boardroom of the County Administration Building. The board will also meet for a budget retreat at 9:00 AM this Friday, March 14, 2025, at the VCU Rice River Center, Walter L. Rice Education Building, located at 3701 John Tyler Memorial Highway, Charles City, Virginia, 23030. Mr. Moyer?
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 for discussion of the acquisition of real property for public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically, discussion of the acquisition of real property for the construction of a surface water intake system. And pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 for discussion of the performance of the specific public officer, specifically, the discussion of the county attorney's performance.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Good evening, good night, everyone. Drive safe home this evening. We will not be conducting any business when we come out of closed session, but you're more than welcome to stay.
I don't know why.